Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Rob Bamber and I serve as Chair of the Board. The quorum is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. The Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing to the public for comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair and I will call upon Board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The Board will then move into a period of deliberation where it will determine whether or not it closes the public hearing and moves to a vote, or continues the public hearing to a later date. A few quick reminders before we begin. We request that participants in this evening's meeting remain respectful to attendees, Board members, applicants, and staff. Please be concise in your comments and presentations to ensure that sufficient time is available for others to comment and for the Board to deliberate. Please turn your cellphones to silent and refrain from side conversations so that all participants in the meeting can hear. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is Moderna Amendment to Site Plan Approval. It's continued from the last meeting. Sure, please introduce yourself.
Joshens from Moderna, One Moderna Way, Norwood. Associate Director of Environment, Health, and Safety, Joshens. So submitted the application last month. There was some minor comments from the Building Department as well as the Fire Department, sent in materials to both of those groups and I haven't heard anything back. The Fire Department at least verbally said that they were satisfied. I haven't heard anything back from the Building Department as of yet, so.
Good. As far as I'm aware, we have gotten a couple notes from those departments.
The Building Department and the Fire Department have both indicated that they're satisfied with the revisions that were spent.
Does the Board have any questions or comments for the Moderna Site Plan?
No, I just want to say that I think we were right on, you know, looking at this very positively at the time. We just needed those few comments from Fire. We had a check-in with them and Gary Bellatier. And so I don't know if there's anything else out there, but it sounds like we're on our way here.
Good. I agree. Are there any other further comments? Oh, I'm fine with it. Great. Well, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Site Plan Approval as amended.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bernie Pachekowski, aye.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Debbie Homewood, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Just an announcement, if anyone's here for the Comp Plan, they're meeting down the hall, right on the left.
Not that you're not welcome here. You're always welcome at Planning Board. But if you go down there to the left, they'll be down on your left. Thank you.
Next up, zoning amendments, public hearings for zoning amendments. First up is Section 3.1.5 Table of Use: Kennels in the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. If the Clerk could read that into the record.
Sure. Public Hearing Notice, Norwood Planning Board, in accordance with the requirements of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given that the Town of Norwood Planning Board will hold a public meeting on March 24, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street and remotely via Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section 3, Use Regulation Subsection F.9, Service Establishments, Commercial and Personal Kennels. The proposed amendments would prohibit commercial and personal kennels in the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, MCMOD. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file with the Community Development Department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing COMDEV@norwoodma.gov or viewed on the Planning Board's webpage. Do I need to read the address? And you can also dial in by phone.
This is a pretty simple change. It's limiting commercial kennels from the NCMOD. So does anyone have any comments before I open it up to the public?
I just want to say I support this. I guess, I think we all might, but we'll see.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea, myself. Agreed.
It's two, it's 9A and 9B, commercial board of training and also personal. Goes to an N for no.
Yes, that's a no.
This is an add, just, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To Sarah, this is an add, this is not a change, right? We didn't have this.
Correct.
We're adding this to the table uses, we're not changing the use.
Right, so the district, which is the column, was created at the same town meeting that this use, which is the row, was divided into two. We created the distinction between commercial and personal kennels. And so since you can't anticipate how town meeting's going to go with one before they approve the other, we ended up with some blank spaces where this new district was created. So this just fills that in. So yeah, it's an add, it's not a change.
Okay, thank you. I'm also with it, I'm fine with it. Debbie, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm fine with it. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, open up to the public. Is anyone available online with a question? Doesn't look like it. Is anyone in attendance have a question? All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bernie Pachekowski, aye.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
So for these, you would consider a motion whether or not to recommend approval to town meeting of this article?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, oh, we recommend approval?
Second.
Recommend the, yeah, a favorable vote at town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Debbie?
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Bernie Pachekowski, yes.
Rob Bamber, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Our next zoning amendment, Section 9.1, Flood Plane Overlay Districts. Sure. You got it, you got it.
All right. Public Hearing Notice, Norwood Planning Board, in accordance with the requirements of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given that the Town of Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 24, 2005 at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street and remotely via Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section 9.1 Flood Plane Overlay District. The proposed amendments would adopt FEMA, or FEMA's new flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study to define the overlay district boundaries and update local standards for permitting development in the Flood Plane Overlay District, FPOD, to comply with recent changes in regulatory requirements, both state, that's the Mass DCR Flood Hazard Management Program, and federal FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. The proposed amendments are required for Norwood to maintain eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program. Draft zoning bylaw and amendments are on file in the Community Development Department at Town Hall and may be viewed during business hours by emailing the department or viewed on the Planning Board's webpage.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have any comments on this?
Um, son, you may have checked your email, your town email this afternoon and seen an email from the Assistant General Manager, Mike Rosen. Have you, did you see that today? No? Okay. I can pull it up here. So Mr. Rosen recommended a series of changes to this proposed article. Based on discussion with the General Manager and Town Council, they suggest inserting this language that I've got up on the screen here. It changes the official title of the Conservation Planner to Environmental Planner, who is the person who is being charged as the Flood Plane Administrator with this bylaw. It inserts, it seeks to insert language that says "or other designee as directed by the General Manager" to be the official Flood Plane Administrator for the town. Mr. Rosen also goes on to mention that they made other grammatical corrections that they consider scrivener's errors, that they did not feel were important enough to be part of tonight's public hearing. I have not seen those errors. This language was the first I was seeing of it as well. So I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that for your discussions this evening. I will say that the language that was drafted before you, like any flood plane bylaw language, does require approval by the state before it goes down to town meeting. DCR reviewed the original draft and said it was acceptable. I did, when I received this just a couple of hours ago, reach out to my contact at DCR, who said that this language would not be an issue. But we don't have the other, you know, the other changes. So, you know, if you're considering including this change going forward, I would recommend that you just kind of condition potentially that on making sure that DCR is okay with those changes too. And I would do my best to send those over as quickly as possible once I have them. Do you have any questions about that?
Yes.
Yeah, just for clarification, Sarah, so those changes are not what we have before SCR?
No.
And we don't have time to continue this to, before town meeting, correct?
You could. Yes.
And?
You could continue this to April 14th.
And with that, when, and that gives us time still?
It does.
I'm just wondering, I mean, it's flood plain, it's a lot of stuff that, I get it, it's technical, it's that, but should we continue this and get a clean copy in front of us?
I think that's a very reasonable suggestion.
I'm going to make that suggestion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this particular one until our next meeting, in which case we'll have a clean copy with all the changes that the Planning Department and the Town Manager and stuff have talked about. We can have a clean copy in front of us so we don't have to, you know, explain it, you know, at the.
Okay.
Debbie has her address.
Yes, Ms. Homewood.
Yeah, I kind of was, Bernie and I are agreeing again. I was, that's scary, isn't it? Because I, I read Mr. Rosen's but didn't quite understand it. What are we allowed to and not to do? It is flood plain, it's a little, it's a little out of my wheelhouse. So I think continuing it would be, I would appreciate that. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion for that?
We would, we would need a motion for that.
You may want to ask if there's public comment.
Yeah, anybody here? Is anyone from the public, either online or present here, wishing to speak on this? All right.
I just have one question. Has the title changed? The title is now environmental?
Yes.
When did that change?
So, so when the current person in that position was offered that position, Environmental Planner was in the offer letter. It's not unusual for titles in town to have like an official title and then a used title, like for a long time, when, when I was here, I was hired as the Assistant Director of Community Development, but everybody called me the Assistant Town Planner, which was my, it seemed like official title. So there is a little bit of that and I think that may explain this. I call Carly the Conservation Planner, and I'm pretty sure that's what Carly has on her card. But either way.
Sure. It works either way.
It works either way.
It's not a big deal, but I was just curious if the name had changed.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to continue to April?
14th.
14th at 7:00 in the Senior Center.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any further comment?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye, Debbie Homewood, yes.
Bernie Pachekowski, yes. Rob Bamber, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
So up next is Section 3.1.5. J., Point 2, Accessory Uses, and Section 11, Definitions, Accessory Dwelling Units. Clerk could read into the record the notice.
Certainly. Public Hearing Notice, Norwood Planning Board, in accordance with the requirements of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given that the Town of Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 24, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street and remotely via Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section 3.1.5. J., Point 2, accessory uses, and Section 11, definitions. The proposed amendments would allow and define accessory dwelling units as a special residential use as required by state law. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file in the Community Development Department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing the department or viewed on the Planning Board's webpage.
Thank you. Sarah, would you like to go through this?
Um, so there's no changes to the language that we've just been discussing since September. But just for anybody tuning in for the first time, what this does is it adds ADUs as an allowable use throughout the residential districts, and it puts the definition of what an ADU is in the bylaw. That definition is verbatim, you know, the definition that is part of the new state statute that we're now obligated to follow, which was the kind of precipitating factor for the inclusion of the ADUs in our bylaw. It does not contain any other regulations about design or use. At the time that this was drafted, we did not have guidelines yet from the state on what might be considered permissible to regulate, and so the Board decided, let's go forward with just the definition and saying it's allowed. And we've since received some more guidance. Nothing that I've seen in that guidance leads me to believe that additional regulation on the local level would be appropriate, but that's a conversation we, we can continue to have when we have more time to do it. For right now, the state law is already in effect. The Building Commissioner is, as required by state law, obligated to begin issuing building permits for these. And these changes in the bylaw would allow our bylaw to essentially match state law.
Yes, Ernie?
Just a comment, follow-up with Sarah on this. Just so, you know, people understand, this is another state law, state mandate put on the town. Because initially, just for a little history here, when we discussed this, I don't know, a year ago, when we started discussing this, the Planning Board, we, you know, the dwelling unit, or we wanted 750 feet. And the state says 900 feet, and that's why you see 900 feet there, square feet. It's not that we want, we wanted 750, the state wanted 900. So in discussions that we had with Gary, the Building Inspector, he wanted something on the books, but we are mimicking the state requirement basically, Sarah, and correct me if I'm wrong. So we're not taking anything on ourselves yet because we don't know if we would be out of compliance. Is that, that's why we can't change that to 750, because the state may say, that's wrong. You can't do that.
So when we first started writing this, yes, we weren't sure if we could impose those types of local requirements and still be compliant with the law. We have since received guidance and virtually all of those additional regulations that this Board was contemplating at the time, which was restricting size to not more than 750 square feet, requiring that they be attached to the primary structure, you know, that would, it's been made clear, would not be permitted. You can't disallow detached ADUs and still be in compliance with the law. So we do have more certainty now to know that at a minimum, some of the things we were talking about, you know, in our first iteration of this, would, would not be allowed.
So the state is more restrictive than what we initially wanted, I just want people to understand that. We wanted, we wanted more.
We were more restrictive.
We were more restrictive, the state is more lenient.
Yes.
On what they want, unfortunately, we have to follow the state. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rob, Ms. Homewood?
Sarah, have, has the state weighed in? You said you've gotten, they've given you a little more specific detail?
Yeah. Yeah, so is there anything specific that you're interested in?
Um, I think my question is, are we going above and beyond what the state requires?
Not at all.
And are design standards something we can ask for, or have they restricted that also?
They've restricted that also.
And this still has to go in for a town meeting, or they don't have any say, or I don't, what's the next step?
Well, that's a fair question. So if town meeting were to vote this down, it wouldn't make any practical difference in how our Building Commissioner has to process permit applications to construct accessory dwelling units in town. Gary would have the guidance available to him in the statute, and since the statute says the town has to issue these permits, he would do so accordingly. It is a best practice for us as a community to have a bylaw that is consistent with state law. So having the definition, even if it is verbatim, the definition, you know, taken from the statute, you know, it, it is a best practice for a community to have that.
Okay.
And on design requirements, they did not, I'll forward out the guidance so you can all have that and look through it on your own, but what they've said is essentially the, the design requirements that you might impose on ADU can't be any more restrictive than that which might apply for a single-family dwelling unit. So if you had any sort of design standards, say, in a historic district, you would have to be able to make the case that that were applied evenly kind of across the board, but it couldn't be something specifically targeting or only applicable to the ADUs.
Okay.
Joe?
Just on the 750 versus the 900, we were talking before, we were saying, well, if it's a minor change, maybe don't go along with it, but that definite question has been asked and answered, that it has to be 900?
Or half the?
Right, the other part.
Whichever is less. We could go in the opposite direction as a community. We could say it could be 1,400 square feet, or half, or whatever, three quarters of the primary. So we could go in that direction, but we can't go in the smaller direction.
But we won't.
Yeah.
Okay. I see a hand up on?
Brian Almeida.
Right, so we will open this up to public comment at this point. Brian Almeida?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm not sure why my video's not working. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Brian Almeida, 1350 Main Street, Walpole, for 1369 Boston Providence Highway Realty Trust. I had a question about the amendment.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there any change being made to 3.1.6 footnote number 13?
I don't believe that's in front of us tonight.
I think that's the next one.
Stand by.
Is that, is that the next amendment that's being discussed tonight, or?
No, that, that hearing was posted for April 14th.
Perfect, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
It's an easy question to answer, I guess.
Is there anyone else from the public, either online or? Yes, Sarah, please.
Hi, Henry Graham, 13 Libby Lane. Are these units restricted to a family-type units, or could they be like a rooming house type of, it's individual rooms for rent, or something like that?
Good question.
Yeah, so the ADU definition is described as a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling. That maintains a separate entrance and is subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements. I would interpret that to mean that it is not kind of that boarding house use category, that it's a self-contained housing unit with the sleeping room, you know, the cooking facilities and the bathroom facility.
Okay, but you're assuming that, you're not sure, right?
I'm, I'm not the Building Commissioner. He's the one who makes those calls. That's how I would read it. And I would also say that one thing that specifically we're restricted against doing is setting any sort of occupancy restrictions. So we wouldn't be able to say as a community, you know, you can have a building permit for one of these types of units, but only if it's family that reside in that unit, or only if everybody in the unit is related to one another. That's something that we're specifically prevented from doing.
Well, in theory, you could take a house and turn the whole thing into a boarding house then, in a sense. You could put an addition on and have 10 rooms rented out.
If it's under 900 square feet and it meets the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, we are, we are not able to restrict any sort of occupancy limit.
What about the main house itself? What I'm saying is you could take the whole thing and turn it into a multi, multi-rentable unit.
No, I don't think that's.
No, that, that would change the use.
That would change the use.
From a single family to?
Yeah, but to your point, Sarah, the accessory dwelling unit can be rented.
Yes.
Yes. So you could, you could have one of these, like a garage, you had a detached garage, was turned into one of these, you can rent them.
I mean, there's multiples, I could paint five of them within a mile of your house.
Well, that's the, to be honest with you, that's one of the building inspector's problems is the, a lot of them are becoming, you know, popping up illegally in the old, some, and so now there's a defined law that will, you know, give him some, something to, even though the state mandated it, some teeth on what, with the size, things like that.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you mind if I come back? Debbie, go ahead.
So question, Sarah, we can't, to this gentleman's point, does the state say that if you have a ADU that's three bedrooms, let's say, I know you don't have to rent it to a family or anything, but can there be three separate unrelated people living in it? You can't say, no, you know, we've got three rooms rented out to three different people?
No, we would not be able to impose that restriction.
No.
Okay. Okay. Did they, they address it at all in the state regulations, or no?
The guidelines are, are pretty specific about what you cannot do as a municipality when you're making those regulations. And, and a lot of it boils down to, as a general rule of thumb, what you would do for a single-family home, right? You can't be more restrictive for an ADU than you would be for a single-family home.
Just, my own opinion on this, and I think, you know, I'm not a fan of, never was a fan of this. And, you know, what started out years ago is what we used to call in-law apartments, because we wanted grandma to stay with us before we put her in the nursing home, has turned into this, and, you know, but it's the law, it's the law, nothing I can say about it.
Mr.?
Mr. Graham will sit.
Mr. Graham.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's Ernie Hearn.
Well, I'm not Mr. Ernie Hearn tonight.
Oh, Mr. Hearn.
David Hearn, 98 Berwick Place. I'm here as a resident, a business owner in the town, taxpayer. You've heard some of my views on ADUs in the past, and I wish we could put some sort of design standards on. I don't think we can, unless we put design standards on single-family houses and residential dwellings. And maybe that's something to think about. Put design standards on additions to existing houses. If you want to add on to your house, there's going to be a design standard so that it's compatible with the neighborhood, compatible maybe with the house it's being attached to. And then we could put design standards on the ADUs that are either attached or put in somebody's yard. We run the risk here of having people put ADUs in Quonset huts. Most of us are familiar with the Quonset hut garage up on Dean Street that is, in my view, pretty ugly. Shipping containers, they could bring in and dump in the side yard, turn it into an ADU. Is this what we really want for our town? Now, I know we're stuck with it. Ernie said it's a mandate. The zoning statute has been amended without a great deal of thought of what it does to the municipalities, only this is something people want. But there are ways to somehow get control, some town control, over what gets built under this. And the limitation on design standards is a limitation as I read the regulations. And I hope you folks have read the regulations, or that they've been provided to you, but they are out. And there's also some guidelines that the EOHLC has published model zoning for accessory dwelling units. I don't know if you folks have seen that, you might want to look at that. The regulations I've looked at, they're very much pro-ADUs, and not very pro-cities and towns, in my view. And I acknowledge that ADUs can be useful. I've had friends who've lived in them in, say, California, and it's a good way to get some extra income and provide some extra housing. But I think we have some problems with how this is drafted, and I think we have some problems with how the state expects us to act under this. And I would recommend looking at these regulations before you take a final vote on it. If I may speak to the draft of the amendment. The amendment proposes to allow ADUs in every district of the town, not just in single residential districts. Every district. And if you look at the proposal, it includes the manufacturing districts, it includes the Boston Providence Highway District, it includes all those other districts as it's proposed. I don't think that's intended. If we're concerned about the state requiring too much, in this case, we're going far beyond what the state is telling us to do. The, the idea that this draft says, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to add accessory dwelling u, unit, Y in all districts. I would suggest you should limit that in the same way that the state has limited it. Districts that allow single-family housing are the districts that the state requires us to allow ADUs in. So, those are S, S1, S2, G, A, GB, general business, CB, central business, and LB, limited business. None of the others. So, I think this should be revised to limit ADUs to those districts. It's enough that we've got to deal with them without a lot of ability to regulate them, but if they're going to be in every district of the town, I think it's not good for the town. So, this ought to be revised. Beyond that...
Somebody's got their mic on.
Mr. Chairman, are you able to silence a person?
Yeah, we got it, thank you.
Beyond that, I would just make a suggestion in terms of drafting the second last line, Roman numeral two, rather than put figures, we're writing in words, one half ought to be in there, just as a matter, it's a matter of style, but it's also a matter of clarity. I know that there's a limitation on what we can require for parking, and I think that will lead to undesirable results. We cannot require any additional parking for ADUs if we're, if the ADU is within a half-mile of the, of a train station. In our case, a train station, we don't have bus depots in this town. I know that's an issue that Ms. Homewood had raised in the past when we discussed ADUs. Can't do anything about it, but people have to understand what it is that they're going to be left with. Beyond that, looking at the regulations, the, you know, where the protected use ADU is something we're required to do. That is one ADU in a lot. We, we could allow more. I would hope that we wouldn't agree to that, or include that in any bylaw. This is a, this is going to be, could be, could be, a big change. And some people who don't care about the neighborhoods where their properties are located may take advantage of it. Mr. Graham has suggested a way that you might be surprised if effectively you get a 900-square-foot rooming house attached to, or on a separate, in a separate building in a neighborhood, putting a burden on people in terms of parking, in terms of utility use, in terms of traffic and all that. I wonder if we can look at limiting that. We can't limit familial relationships and the occupancy based on that, but if there's some other way, we might want to think about that. I would suggest that there are ways to blunt the negative effects of this statute, and that one way might be to come up with a standard that creates design requirements that would apply to additions to existing homes, and then apply it to ADUs. Then I think you would not be violating the regulations and the requirements of the ADU. The big concern the state seems to have when you read through the regulations is that cities and towns not take steps that would effectively prevent ADUs from being built. What I'm suggesting wouldn't prevent them from being built, but they might prevent them from being built in ways that neighbors would find objectionable, property values would be adversely affected, and we should try to avoid that, too. The intent of the bylaw is to act for the general welfare of the town, and the health and safety of the inhabitants. We might be able to do something a little bit better. I understand, as Ms. Dixon has said, we're operating now without a bylaw, without a, because the state's statute took effect on February 2nd, or 3rd. And the building commissioner is obligated to issue building permits for ADUs without any guidance in terms of a bylaw here. I wonder also if our bylaw might have a little more meat on it in terms of, even if it's reciting provisions that are in the statute or in the regulations. For the sake of people who refer to the bylaw when deciding what they're going to do, or try to do, in terms of building and zoning requirements, why don't we add into the bylaw some of those requirements, so people know, looking at the bylaw itself, what the limitations are? What they can do, what they can't do. For example, parking, there's nothing here. We're not, we don't have a section on ADUs. And it's referred to as a, along the way, to, in the warrant, the statement of the warrant article, it says, "To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaw to allow accessory dwelling units as a special residential unit." Now, we do have in Section 8, special residential regulations. Why not put it in there with a little more detail about what can or can't be done, so people have the guidance right in our bylaw? And not have to refer to regulations they don't know how to find, or a statute that is, for most people, like reading a different language. So, I just suggest that this could be, this bylaw could be, have a little more detail for the guidance of people who will be operating under it. I would suggest we look at whether we might impose some sort of a general requirement, and some people won't like it, but if you want to add on to your house, maybe you've got to satisfy a board that it's going to be compatible with the architecture there. And that then could be applied to ADUs. And those are my suggestions or recommendations, and I'm looking at this as a longtime resident of this town who is concerned that the effect of this, without some way to control it, is going to be negative for neighborhoods. Not against additional housing, I'm not against people maybe making a little bit of money with an ADU on their property, but I am concerned about what it does to the others who have no control over. And that's where the boards have an opportunity maybe to do something about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, Sarah, the question of Ernie Hearn, of Mr. Hearn, tonight, you know, brings up some, some valid points. I, I think the, I, even though I agree with him on the, the design standards, I don't think that it can be worked into this, at this point. That would be something we would have to, you know, tackle down the road. But the, the districts, I mean, on a use table, I think, you know, and I don't, and it's been a while since I've talked to Gary about this, but was there a reason for the all districts versus, and, we didn't do a by, did we do, do we need to do a bylaw to, to change the use table on this, or would that be?
Yes, we, we propose to add a line to the use table.
And with the change.
With this.
With the changes.
In addition to adding the definition.
So, one on...
But it does add it to, as Mr. Hearn said, it adds it to all districts. And that was intentional.
That was intentional. So, maybe I'd like to just, now, I, I'm thinking, I said, okay, manufacturing, it has to be with a primary dwelling, so if you're a meatball factory, and I'm not picking on meatball, if you're a meatball factory, you can't put a, an accessory dwelling unit because you don't have a primary residence there. But it, to what Mrs., Ms. Homewood always says is clarity, and maybe that we add some of the, the language from the state regulation, cut and paste some of the state regulation that, that has some definitive cans and cannots in it, maybe, a, a good idea, for lack of a better term. So, just your thoughts, if this is something maybe we want to just circle back to Gary on?
Yeah, so I think when, when the board first, you know, started getting this ready and was preparing to submit it to the Board of Selectmen in, what, January or February, the plan was to put forward the table of use allowance and the definition, so that we could demonstrate compliance with the state law as quickly as possible. Knowing that in time, more guidance from the state would be released, there would be more recommendations from council to kind of support us as we then looked at, okay, what would a more expanded ADU bylaw look like? And a lot of the comments, you know, I think are reasonable ones, that you would want to consider for that expanded version of the bylaw. There's a model ADU bylaw that the state's released to give you some inspiration about what that might look like. So, I think that conversation should happen, for sure. I think it will take some time to do it properly. I think the course you're on, which is to focus on the definition and the table of uses for now, and then give yourself the time, now that we have all of the resources available to us, to explore these questions. I, I think that's a good plan. To the question specifically about the districts, because it is an interesting point, and it is one that we spent some time researching, and actually asked about in one of the state So, the definition is specific to a dwelling unit, so you wouldn't be able to, to use your example, build one on a commercial property in a manufacturing district. But as you know, there are plenty of pre-existing non-conforming uses all over town, whether it's commercial uses in residential districts, or residential uses in some of the commercial districts. And the definition is specific that the ADU is a protected use on a dwelling unit. And so, the interpretation there is that if you've got a pre-existing non-conforming residence in a non-residential district, that they still are eligible for the protected ADU.
You can't shut them out.
You can't shut them out. And so, that's why it was written that way. It doesn't allow residential development on commercial properties. It allows for the residential use that's already there to put in the protected ADU. Does that make sense?
It does, it does, but would a way around that be, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head here, could you list the, in the, in all the districts, in those particular districts, non-residential districts, manufacturing, limited manufacturing, could you put in S, special permit, in that case probably zoning board of appeals? That someone who has a house could go to the zoning board of appeals and say, "I have a home in a non-conforming district. I would like to put one of these in, I meet all the requirements," and then the zoning board of appeals could, could act on it. You can, I guess, say no.
No, they're not allowed to do that, they have to be by right.
It has to be by right.
Just, yeah, so, the guidance we've received, and the protected use terminology is kind of, it emerged, you know, as the state was releasing its, its regulations. And it's been an interesting development for me to follow, because a protected use, you know, we know more commonly as those uses that are protected under the Dover Amendment. Your religious uses, your educational uses. Those are the uses that, you know, precedent sets forward, that we can't essentially deny one of those uses based on our dimensional requirements. We're being told to treat ADUs, we being planners and building commissioners, to treat ADUs with the Dover Amendment test. And if we have a dimensional requirement on the books, even if it applies across the board to single-family homes, if in a specific instance it would render the building of an ADU impossible, then we would be required to look at that and make a Dover Amendment finding, which is a very, very broadly permissive way of applying this standard. But it is also what is driving, you know, a lot of my head shaking to all of your ideas, which is not personal. But, you know, I, I think normally that would be a good solution, right, to have that extra layer of review for something that's on a non-conforming property. But they've been very explicit that that cannot occur for the ADU because it's considered a protected use.
May I, Chair?
Just one quick follow-up. Debbie, is on a dimensional requirement. So, if, if you're in a, a three-family and you've got a detached garage that's, you know, pre-existing, been there before zoning, and the garage is two feet off the property line, you know, can they do that? Can they, they can flip that to one? They can. The, the dimensional requirements would be as like new-built, basically, right?
It would be an existing footprint, and as long as it didn't exceed the 900 square feet. And it's satisfied, of course, building codes for safety and egress and, you know...
So, I, I mean, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here, so if I had a, a two-car garage that's, was built in the 30s, a predated zoning, and it's sitting close to the property line, as a lot of them are in certain areas, the old, old areas of the town, I could knock it down, use the same footprint? of the town, I could knock it down, use the same footprint, and put up a new building on the old footprint, right? That would be fine, I guess, right? I think under this, it would be, yeah.
And again, we can, we can and we should have these conversations.
Yeah.
And other communities are going to start adopting their own bylaws and will have kind of more inspiration to look from. You know, I think if we want to push the limit on a standard, you know, just from a conservative perspective and possible legal expenses, I don't know that I always liked the idea of being the first one to do it. As this settles in and we get to see kind of what other communities are adopting and whether or not the AG approves those or doesn't, I think that will be helpful for us, too. So I, all of that is to say, our original plan of kind of putting forward the definition and the use now and then having an expanded conversation about what's possible for us to do later, I still think that's a good plan for a lot of reasons.
And so Gary, right now, has the state regulations to be his guide?
He does. And that's what he's been doing since February 2nd, which was the date that the law went into effect.
May I, Ms.?
Yes, Ms. Holmwood, go ahead.
So do we have any idea what the other towns, have you heard many of the other towns, what they're planning?
Most communities are doing something like what we're doing right now.
They're doing what?
Most communities are doing something similar to what we're doing right now. Other communities, you know, many of them already had ADU bylaws on the books that have requirements that can no longer be kept, like requiring family, you know, relationships for occupants and things like that. So a lot of communities are cleaning up their existing ADU bylaws to remove requirements for special permits and things like that. But otherwise, it's a lot of scrambling, I'd say is a fair word to use.
Okay, I, again, I know this is not going to be a popular thing to say, but I just think this is a bridge too far. We did the MVTA, we did the overlay, we did, you know, it's just, I think it's, our responsibility as a planning board to think of not just more housing, but of the housing of the people who don't want three extra cars in their neighborhood and S2s becoming multi-unit lots. I think that's our responsibility also, not just, you know, nobody can say Norwood doesn't have enough housing and affordable housing, is this affordable housing? I don't, I don't agree. Not popular, but I have to say it.
Mr. Sheehan?
Back to the definition, when we were talking about all districts, could we describe that better? We could say all districts, and then we could explain that it is the housing, those with single families, but then go on to talk about these others which may have housing there as if to give more guidance, to talk about those, maybe it's a manufacturing where someone does have a home. And that's why we do have to include it, but we could say why.
Was that Gary's interpretation? He would explain to them, right?
Yeah. I mean, do you think more clarification is needed in the language that we're proposing? Because remember, this is just lifted from the state's definition. We could modify it. It's our bylaw. We could do that. Or do you think it would be helpful to include, you know, are you suggesting like yellow sheet materials are the things that town meeting members would need for clarification?
I'm just trying to, in the future, if someone comes along and says, look, it says everywhere, and you end up with, I'm not saying Gary would have the answers, I'm sure, but maybe if he's not here in the future, you might have someone who comes along and gives you that totally different argument. If we had it very specific, it's almost as if there was housing in all the regular districts where housing is allowed, but there are some odds and ends, some outliers that we're talking about. That's why we're including everyone. Is that true?
The definition specifically says it can be added to a dwelling unit.
Right.
So that's the measure of specificity that restricts this only to existing dwelling units, regardless of where they are. That's the catchguard against your ADU, you know, in the backyard of the meatball factory.
I was just wondering, I was just, see if we could clarify what Dave had been talking about. That at first, you know, his question was, how come you're doing it over here? And the answer is, well, because there could be some dwelling units there, which would surprise most people. But those are the outliers. You might find one here and one there.
Mr. Hearn, would you comment on that?
I have a comment on that. Neither the statute nor the regulations say that they go in any district where you might find a single-family residence. What the regulation does, it defines any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are permitted or in allowable use, including any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as of right or by special permit. It doesn't refer to properties, including, say, some outlier, as Mr. Sheehan just said, where somebody might have a home in what is a district that no longer allows them. It says, "single-family residential zoning district." So I think that is intended to be read as you look at the use table and you go across, as I just did a little while ago, what are the districts that allow single-family dwellings? All the residential districts, and then under business, the general business and central business districts, and the limited business districts, not the others. So if you follow the regulation, those are the districts. And I think to say they're allowed in all districts is only going to confuse people and lead to problems. Zoning, the principles of zoning law look to eliminate non-conformities. If you have a non-conforming use and you don't use it, you lose it. And so if somebody has a non-conforming use out there, say, a manufacturing district that is, somehow there's a house there for some reason, from many years ago, maybe before zoning existed and, you know, came into being in July of 1927. I had to say 1927 because we're two years away from '27 again. But the fact is, if you've got those, they are non-conforming uses. They're not allowed by special permit in most cases, and they're certainly not allowed now as a matter of right. So why do we want to expand the area where ADUs can be put in? I suggest to you that you limit it to the residential districts and the other two, central business, three, central business, general business, and limited business where single-family dwellings are allowed. The second thing I have is a question. Having heard Ms. Dixon's comments, what are we doing that's different from what presently exists under the state statute? What are we doing that's different with this proposed bylaw? It's the same definition, so we're doing nothing different. Then why do it? The suggestion a little while ago is, maybe, you know, with a little more time, sometime down the road, we could maybe draft something that's got a little more detail, a little more guidance and all that. You know, once you give something to somebody, you're not going to get it back. If we want to have a bylaw that is different from the state, that has more details, more guidance for people, and all we're proposing now is to do exactly what the state statute already says, then why bother to do it? Why don't we work on doing something that might provide or speak to some of the concerns that we've heard from members here tonight and others, and work toward that? Instead of passing something, everybody says, okay, we don't do anything more. No, the fact is, we've done nothing. There's no gain from adopting this now. I used to think we were going to have a gain, that we were going to have something that would provide some guidance, be tailored to our needs. That's not what we have here. This is just, this is going beyond, in fact, what the state says we have to do. Look at the regulations and see how they define things. Think about those outliers. They're nothing, I don't want to say nothing more, they are non-conforming uses. We're not required to expand non-conforming uses as a matter of right. Never been allowed to do that as a matter of right. So I would say, at this point, why bother? We're not gaining a single thing with this proposal, and we're locking ourselves in in some respects, and we're going beyond what the state requires us to do in one, to the issue of where this can be done. And if somebody has a house out there and they say, well, look, this is a protected use, and Dover Amendment under Section 3 is going to protect me on this, let them show the town that. They don't need permits then, if in fact they are covered by the Dover Amendment. Doesn't have to be in the bylaw because the Dover Amendment is the law. Section 3 is the law that applies regardless of what a local bylaw says. So let Section 3 of the zoning act take care of those rare cases that might arise. And go back and write something that has more detail, provides a little more protection for people without violating the guidelines. This model zoning for accessory dwelling units, which was prepared by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, not by the state, but by M.A.P.C., just version one dated March 11th. Who knows if there'll be another version? You folks probably haven't had a chance to look at it. I looked at it the other day. I read through the regulations. I think we've got to take those into account and say, I don't see anything gained by this at all. It doesn't, the building inspector is going to do the same thing he's doing now, which is follow the state law that he has to. So I would suggest that, and I would certainly suggest you take it out of any business district that we don't allow single-family housing in already. And cross that bridge of the outliers, they'll be protected anyway if they're supposed to be protected. That's what Section 3 does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ernie?
I'm just, because I know this is, I just don't like this whole thing, period. But to Mr. Hearn's point, I agree with him. And I think is, we either, we get rid of in all districts and we let the state regulation mandate, what, and Gary can interpret that as residential districts. I think maybe keeping the, I mean, the definition, we should have a definition in there of what accessory dwelling unit is. I mean, I agree with you. I think we need a definition of what it is. But as far as this all districts, I think it's opening up a can of worms, and I, and I might even, I might even go, and I'm probably wrong, Sarah, and you're going to correct me, but if we put the definition in, and then in the use table, if we put a footnote, and I wasn't good at footnotes in high school or college, so I'm probably wrong here, but if we put a footnote that said, state regulation, you know, state regulation, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, building inspector will follow state regulations, state guidelines, or something, you know, at this point, until we get our own regulations, would that be a stupid idea? To put a footnote that said the state regulations would guide?
I mean, he's going to do that whether or not you put it in your bylaw or not.
Right.
Right.
But it's...
He's going to follow the state law.
He's going to state, he's going to follow state law. But I, I think having a definition is good, but I, this whole all district thing...
Would it be helpful to the board to have written guidance from the state on this particular matter before you close your hearing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Sarah.
Would it be helpful for the board if I tried to obtain some written guidance on the matter from the state before you close this hearing? Because, I mean, I can tell you what's been shared with us in our trainings.
Yeah.
And that's why this was written this way.
Yeah.
But it sounds like, you know, some firmer guidance on what would be considered allowable might be of use to the board before you decide.
Rob? Debbie?
May I?
Yes, Ms. Holmwood.
If, I think laws come down to us, and I believe it's our responsibility to look at it and say, this doesn't work the way you want it to in our town. And I think just to say, well, the state says we're going to do it, so we're going to do it, I'm not comfortable with that, and I don't think that if you hold people and they weren't on camera, I don't think they'd be comfortable with it either. So I don't, I mean, it's got to go through town meeting, correct? Am I correct in that, Sarah?
Yes.
And because the state said so, it doesn't mean that we have to do it. We can figure out a way to make it better for our town. We are not a town without rentals, without multi-units, without large apartment complexes, without downtown overlay districts, without MVTA. We have got all of that, and this is just a bridge too far. You have, it's so open-ended that, I mean, I know Mr. Hearn brought up the Quonset Hut. That came in front of town meeting, and nobody envisioned that that was going to be an outbuilding, the Quonset Hut. And I think probably the majority of people go by that every day and go, how did that happen? So, you know, it's not, I just think we need to say, this doesn't work for the cheesecake that is Norwood. It is, we have small lots, we have minimal, single and two-family, you know, it's S1 or S2, Mr. Hearn read them all off, I didn't write them down quick enough. Because they told us we needed to do this, I think we need to think twice and customize it because we are not a big-lotted town. We have a lot of commercial, we have a lot, a lot of apartment buildings, and I just, this one just doesn't work for me. And I, I just, it's just too open-ended. Because the state said so, it's just not a good enough reason, I think, as a board, for us to say, okay, the state said so, so now we got to do it.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Sheehan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree on the all districts, that we don't need to go any further than what the state says we do. So we should just do the, you know, make it according to those that have housing.
Yes, sir.
What is the date we're supposed to be in compliance with this?
It's active now.
February 2nd was the date that the state statute became practice.
But when do we have to change the zoning? They must give you some grace period to get this done.
Not officially, not officially. It's not like you have to have your zoning updated by such and such a date. However, if our building commissioner received a permit application for an ADU that met, you know, the state's bylaw, or their state, you know, their law, their definition, you know, if he received that today and denied it because we didn't have any local regulation and that were challenged in court, like, we would lose as a town.
How many towns have complied already?
Not many. You know, most communities don't have spring town meetings until they...
Would we be better off waiting and see what some of the other towns do, how they handle it, instead of trying to be the first one to comply? Or one of the first?
It seems like that was the plan of the planning board. That was the goal here.
Once you set your rules, you've complied, you're set.
No, we don't have to comply. Yeah, Mr. Fajkowski.
As much as I don't like this, I don't advocate denying, I mean, going against the state law. And I don't believe the building inspector will ignore the state law, and nor should he. But I think that we should, you know, I'm okay with a definition because the definition is only describing what it is. But, you know, going back, I think we should look at, you know...
But the, you know, going back, I think we should look at the, you know, this, you know, again, I'm going back to this all district thing, and, and, you know, the state law is the state law, and I, I don't anticipate going against that. But I think that we should definitely pull that out, that all district thing, and let the state regulation be interpreted the way I interpret it, that it's permitted resident districts. And go from there. And if somebody who's an outlier, you know, wants to do it, then we, that gets dealt with, but-
There's a chance that the attorney general doesn't approve it.
I'll take that chance.
I'm just throwing that out there, that, like, if you're, if you don't have the certainty on whether or not this is in, in compliance with the bylaw, or with the state law, like, there is a chance that town meeting passes it and the attorney general does not.
What, what, if we, if we don't, if we say, if we don't put anything in there about districts, and we rely on the state regulation, which, as Mr. Hearn read, states that it's permitted resident, I'm paraphrasing, permitted resident, residential districts, that's pretty clear. We have-
The guidance we were given was-
We have eight permitted residential districts.
This is to any dwelling unit, regardless of where it is.
That's not what the regulations is.
That's what I'm offering to you, is if it would be helpful to you to answer this particular question, I can try to get some written guidance from the state specific to this before you close the hearing.
Yeah, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, I'm also gonna say that we continue this, and I hate to ask Sarah to do this, but if she could-
You're offered.
-get with Gary or town council or something and voice, I think all of us have that concern about the districts.
There's a technical assistance team at HLC that's available to answer questions like this, so I'll reach out to them.
And I, and just to, to a point that Mr. Sheehan brought up earlier, when you do write the yellow sheets on this-
Being very clear about it.
Be very clear why, if for whatever reason, something in there like that has to stay, and I'm not saying, hopefully it doesn't, that we're very clear in the yellow shirts why. But I, I would like to make a continuance, Mr. Chairman.
I think we do, we do have another hand.
There is one.
Oh.
Yeah, online.
Online.
Still public hearings, so yeah.
Uh, we have someone online.
Christian.
Christian?
Or Tenova.
You've raised your hand.
If the, if the town has already received applications for ADUs?
Yes, where his name and address.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat your name and address, please?
3 Cameron Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The town has already received applications for ADUs?
Uh, I'm getting a head nod, yes.
Approved already?
Yes.
Yes. Was there another question?
Yes, sir.
I think we lost you there. Yes, Attorney Hearn, before we move on.
I think the point is, the gentleman has said they've been approved.
Yep.
That's what the state law says. It's already in effect. We don't have to do anything to comply. If we do nothing, we will be where we are now, and frankly, I think we'll be where we would be if this were adopted by town meeting. There'd be no change, no gain. And I would, for one, not vote for this at town meeting, because it's not changing anything in any positive way. In fact, as proposed, it would extend it in a negative way. So I appreciate that the board is concerned about the districts all being listed, but why do it at all if it's not going to change what's already in effect under state law? We can comply with state law, the building commissioner will follow the state law, issue the permits when they are appropriately requested, and we go on, and then study this a little bit more now that we have the guidance of regulations, other guidance. The only guidance that really counts, by the way, is the regulation and the statute, until there's some court case. But guidance from these departments is really what staff thinks about something, and that's not the regulation, and that's not the statute. So I, I'd be concerned about, you know, unless they change the regulations or the statute, we really have to be guided by those.
Mr. Chairman, through you, can I ask Mr. Hearn a question?
Sure. Mr. Hearn, just to, what my, I'm just curious on your opinion on just, on the definition, of leaving the definition in and adding, adding the definition of accessory dwelling unit. That, that there should be a definition in, in the bylaw on what that is. Not statute, not?
Let me just look.
Well, it does, it does the principal dwelling or 900 square feet. Yeah, which is Section 11 definitions.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the state statute, the state regulation definition.
Did you wanna see the?
No, I have that.
Oh, you have that.
I have the proposed bylaw. The state regulation definition of accessory dwelling unit is a self-contained housing unit. You might wanna read along with what we've got there in the proposal. A self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements. That, colon, so far, I think it reads the same way.
Mm-hmm.
A, we have Roman number 1. Maintains a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling. So far, it seems to be the same. Sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code for Safe Egress.
Mm-hmm.
It says that. Roman 2, in our bylaw, B, in the regulation, is not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller.
Mm-hmm.
And, we don't have this, but the state has it, is subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental, as defined in General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 1, provided, however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an ADU that is not a short-term rental. So they're telling us a little bit more than what we have in our definition, that A and B in the regulation are the same as 1 and 2 on our proposed bylaw, and then it adds, "It's subject to such additional regulations as may be imposed by a municipality." So we don't have any of that. We've left that out. See, we're not, we're not going there right now. Maybe we will in the future, after we study this a little more. But there's a definition of what an ADU is. Why add it to a bylaw when there's nothing else in the bylaw? Nothing to, to refer to. It's, the building inspector knows what these are, you know, and he grants permits. I know he's granted permits. I know people have gotten them. So I don't see the point of this, of this proposal right now.
Of just adding the definition?
I don't even see the point of that. It's in, it's in the regs.
Well, it's, it's in the regs, but if someone is, is, that's why we have the definition table in the, in the by, in the book, in the bylaw book. If someone that, that is thinking of doing this, and they, they wanna know, well, what do they, what does Norwood consider an ADU, it's there.
Yeah, and that's fine. In that respect, it's fine.
That's, that's the whole purpose of the-
But there's nothing else. It's not, the problem is, it's, it's there in a vacuum. There's no other regulation or definition of anything else in our bylaw that tells you what you can do with it. So anybody who wants to do it will see what it might be, and then they gotta go back to the-
They still have to go back to the building inspector for the state.
The building inspector will explain, yeah.
I'm still in favor of the, of adding the definition.
There's no real harm, but I'm just saying.
There's no harm, and I-
It's the same.
It, it's the same, and I believe there's no harm in it, and it, and it, at least is in there, because we do put definitions in there. I go to that, that definition table all the time when we start talking about different things that, you know, that don't come up that often, and you wanna know what a, you know, a primary residence is, or a, you know, multi-something, or whatever. So again, I'm, I'm gonna ask that, if, that we continue the public hearing until April 14th at 7 o'clock at the Senior Center, for the purpose of new information or new conversation, or whatever you wanna, however you wanna define it, on the, the all-district topic, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm in favor at this, tonight, of leaving the definition in and going to town meeting with only the bylaw adding the definition to the table, to the bylaw book. But I guess a little revisit on this one would be my. Let's come back and maybe town council, maybe Gary, maybe, you know, whatever, weigh in on this a little bit more, so we get, we get a little bit more info.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to continue.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Ernie Pachakowski, yes.
Rob Amber, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
All right. Up next, Section 5.3, non-conforming structures, and 5.4, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. The clerk could read it into the-
Public hearing notice, Norwood Planning Board, in accordance with the requirements of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, notice is hereby given to the town of Norwood Planning Board. It will hold a public hearing on March 24th, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, and remotely via Google Meet. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on the draft zoning bylaw amendments to Section 5.3, non-conforming structures, and 5.4, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. The proposed amendments will require the variance relief for alterations, modifications, and expansions on pre-existing non-conforming structures where such alterations would create or expand non-conformities. The proposed changes would also allow the building commissioner to find such alterations, modifications, and expansions as not to increase the non-conforming nature if the change results in an increase in the habitable floor area of the original structure of 75% or less. The draft zoning bylaw amendments are on file on the Community Development Department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours by emailing the department or viewed on the Planning Board's webpage.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah, would you, do you have anything new on this, or?
Nothing new on this. Same language. That was, you know, agreed on and voted on by the board to submit to the board of segment. Yes, I don't have any other updates.
Okay. So just on, on this, the, the red line on 5.33 variance required, the red line is crossed out, so that's out.
Yes.
And the new language, there's-
So it just eliminates that first-
Just eliminating that first sentence from the old-
And then capitalizing the T and the, so that that sentence-
So that first sentence was eliminated from the, the old one now, and on the 5.4, basically, we're changing 25 to 75.
Correct.
And everything else is the same.
Correct.
And on, on that, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think Mr. Sheehan and I were at that meeting, right, with Sarah, the building inspector, and two members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we went through this, and what, what I think came out of that meeting, and, and one thing that, we don't get a lot of that here, at this board. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the granting authority here, and the building inspector is the enforcing officer here. We kinda write the bylaw, but in this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals really is the one that has to interpret it, right? I mean, we don't get a lot of these here. And they are both, both the Zoning Board of Appeals members, the chairman and one member, and the building inspector are fine with this change, and they're the ones, to be honest with you, that have to deal with it. And they know a lot, they understand this, but be a lot more than I think I do or we do as a board, so I'm kinda deferring to their expertise on this, and I'm, and I think Joe was at that meeting and, and kind of probably agrees with me, so I think we're all, I think I'm in favor of it.
Yes, Joe.
I, I do agree, and I thought it was a super helpful meeting to see how those others handle it, whether it be the building inspector or the Zoning Board of Appeals, and everyone had some input, and we got to understand what, what they're all about as far as, when it comes to this particular, these issues here that are contained within here. And it's, it was a little bit, I guess, enlightening to, to, to see their reasons for changes that they proposed, and we came down with a, a good agreement here, I think. We never would've gotten there by ourselves and have, have a good product. This was, this is a great meeting.
Ms. Homewood, I see your hand raised.
Um, I got it, I have a question. If, could somebody explain to me in less than as many words as you read on the, explain me what exactly this says? In what Brian just read, so somebody that doesn't have the advantage of having all this paper in front of them, what is this saying? Brian, stop fronting. Who wants to, who wants to take it?
I can-
I vote for, yeah.
All right, so as the zoning bylaw is written, Debbie.
Yeah?
There's a little bit of a exemption, I don't know if loophole's the right word, but for any other property in town, if you are encroaching into the setbacks, right, you're creating a new non-conformity, you're getting close, building closer to your side lot line, or building closer to your rear lot line, you would need to request and receive a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Variance being a higher standard, kind of a more difficult, you know, hurdle to, to hit in order to satisfy the criteria.
Or, or whatever.
Exactly, right.
Okay.
However, if you are a single or a two-family dwelling, right now, as the bylaw is written, and you want to create a new non-conformity, and you are pre-existing non-conforming, so you've got a smaller than is required lot area, or less frontage than would be required, if you're pre-existing non-conforming, instead of needing a variance for that same new non-conformity, you just need a special permit, which you know, but I'll reiterate, is a little bit more of a discretionary form of, of relief, where the board really gets to consider the totality of, you know, is the proposal more detrimental or not? What this change would do is it would make that standard consistent across all properties, whether you're a conforming or non-conforming home. If you want to build closer to the lot lines, then you would need that variance. The other component of this change is that it kind of lifts the threshold by which a special permit is needed for a, for a special permit for something that's non-conforming. So right now, any alteration to the structure that increases the habitable floor area of the original structure by more than 25% is required to go to the ZBA for a special permit. Anything under 25% can be done, you know, by right. The building commissioner has the authority to say, "This is not more detrimental, it can be done by right." But above 25%, it goes to the ZBA right now for a special permit. This lifts that to 75%, which expands the number of these types of home renovations. And these aren't the ones that are creating new non-conformities. It's just, you're a non-conforming house, let's say, on area, you're building, you know, into your rear yard, and you, you're not getting closer to a lot line, you're just expanding. It, it lifts that to 75% increase of habitable floor area.
But they still have to go to the ZBA, correct, if they go to the 75?
If it's over the 75% increase, yes.
And- And we're doing this because...
There were a lot of times that people had to go to the zoning board and spend a lot of money getting attorneys and/or engineers to write up plans. And they were usually, it went through anyways very easily. The board, it wasn't problematic for the board. They didn't, they found that a lot of this was unnecessary. And they're more or less granting relief where they felt it was unfair to not make these changes.
So then if you increase the nonconformity, it's unfair to the person that wants to, let's say... We all know that the lots in Norwood are odd shapes, and you're over too close to the line. Let's say the person that's not increasing the nonconformity, let's say a neighbor, for example, has an issue with that. It's on them to... what? Because they don't have any recourse? Because they don't have to come in front of the board unless it...
If they were increasing the nonconformity, they would have to come in front of the board. So there would be relief, and they would, and those people would, the neighbors would hear about it, and there would be a hearing. So that's intact. That's intact.
Okay.
Mr. Sheehan, I see your hand up online there.
Yes, yeah, Mike Sheehan, Six Old Farm Road. And I sit on the ZBA. In my years on the ZBA, we have never denied one of these. They are almost all over 25% because when you look at the average house size of 1,500 to 2,200, you're talking 300, 400 square feet. And most rooms that are added a porch out to the back are far exceed that. And if someone wanted to expand vertically on a ranch and wanted to go up, we've approved these at 100%. And I think Joe Sheehan hit it right on the head. It was really an unnecessary expense having two, three of these once a month and people having to get an architect to spend all the money to come before the board when, as I said, I probably voted on a couple of dozen of these, and we've never said no because they're reasonable. And if they are creating a new nonconformity, they do have to come before us. And if it is 75%, they do have to come before us. So I think this is good for the residents and would hope that all the members would support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Debbie, I hope that answered your questions.
It does. Thank you.
Great. This is a public hearing. Mr. Hearn?
I had a couple of questions, if I could. Ms. Dixon mentioned something about requiring a variance in some of these circumstances now. Is that a change? When would a variance be required? For the record, David Hearn Jr., 98 Barwick Place.
Still Barwick. Still David Hearn. It would be required for any increase of an existing nonconformity or creation of a new nonconformity. So formerly, there was that line in 5.33 that would say, except as provided in Section 5.4 below with regard to single and two-family residential structures. That would be struck. And the language requiring variances for essentially new nonconformities would stand not just for conforming, single-family homes or commercial structures or what have you, but it would be consistently applied across the board.
But 5.3 says that changes to single and two-family structures shall be governed by Section 5.4. And the language that is proposed to be removed in Section 5.33 says pretty much the same thing.
Right.
So 5.3 deals with non-residential structures and would require a variance if you're creating a new nonconformity. Right?
And that would now be true for residential structures as well.
Where does it say that? I guess that's what I'm confused, I'm hearing that tonight, and I don't see that.
Previously, there was that provision that said, except as provided in Section 5.4 below with regard to single and two-family residential structures. What that did was created a carve-out for nonconforming, single- and two-family structures who are increasing nonconformities but were able to obtain relief by virtue of a special permit, which was established in 5.4.
But the carve-out is still there in Section 5.3, which says 5.3 doesn't apply to single and two-family houses. So you don't even have to deal with it. I mean, it may be superfluous language, but if the meeting is to make people get a variance for their houses, it doesn't say that. And I would hope it doesn't say that because the standard for a variance is so strict that very few of them are granted. And the few that are granted of challenge will be overturned in court 95% of the time. So if we're going to require that for residential because people don't fit in these categories. I think that 5.4 has always given an easier standard to meet, provided an easier standard to meet for residential, and that's okay. I read this to have only one substantive change, and that is to change 25% to 75%. I don't think it does anything else. I don't think it imposes a variance, nor do I think it should. Because the language in 5.3 at line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, changes to single and two-family structures shall be governed by 5.4. You read that, and it's like, okay, you don't even have to look at 5.3 anymore. I go straight to 5.4. So the, I would hope that we weren't adopted, that we're not going to adopt or propose to adopt something that creates a variance requirement for changes to residential structures of that type because they are so difficult to get. Nobody will get them. I also have a concern about the 75% limitation or authorization. And I can understand, you know, Mr. Sheehan's comments about they grant them right and left, and in most cases, nobody's hurt. Many of the people who come before the boards don't employ attorneys. But if you're going to do an addition, you've got to employ an architect to design it or somebody to design it, or an engineer. And an engineer or surveyor to draw the plan that goes to the building department so they know what you're building. So you still have to do that stuff. You may not have to go to the zoning board if this passes, a lot of the people. But to me, 75% means that somebody could expand their house that's already tight to a sideline and add 75% bulk to that. And all of a sudden, your backyard is shaded 95% of the time. When you had an open backyard, but your neighbor's able to add on to that nonconforming house and almost double it in size, maybe 50% is a better number. And after that, you go into the zoning board. Granted, they give a lot of them up. They grant most of the requests. But where's the harm in having somebody look at this and think about how it might affect the neighbors? Because the standard at 5.4.4 talks about determining, the board to determine that they can grant the special permit relief if they determine the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure. That's not a hard standard to meet, but somebody's looking at it. So I just thought the 75% is too much. But I also, if this is viewed as creating a variance requirement for residential, I don't see it in the draft. And I, I think, look, the 75% is not a hill to die on from my point of view. I just, I do think, though, that we could end up with unintended consequences here. Maybe increase it to 50% and see what it does. If it doesn't solve the problem, the perceived problem of the board... I don't see it a problem that the board grants these. I don't understand what the problem is. Is there a problem, is this a solution in search of a problem? Or is there a particular problem that we're trying to solve? Other than expenses that people have to get an engineer if they're going to add on to their house, and they've got to lay it out on a plan that's signed by an engineer or a surveyor to show the building commissioner where the addition will be and that it will comply with zoning, they still have to do that stuff. So I just don't know. But when I heard variance, I'm like, I don't know. Is it written there? Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan, I see your hand raised up again.
Yeah, Mike Sheehan, Six Old Farm Road. Just, we did have a meeting with the building inspector, Sarah, Alex, and members of the planning board. And the reason we arrived at this number is we went back through the history of the special permits. And the number that came before us fell between 50 and 100%. Most of them were 50%. When you look at, you know, the size of the houses, a 750-feet addition on a 2,000-square-foot house is going to exceed that number. So that's how we arrived at that. And there's no variance requirement. This is just special permits. If they're going to increase any nonconformity, they have to come before us. So that is how, you know, just to answer the question, how did we arrive at that number? That's how we got that number. And I know they still have to go through this with the filing of the plans and everything. But it's really an inconvenience for a lot of these people that have to come before us. And the things, they're done in 15 minutes because they're very reasonable, and the building inspector should have the authority to do this. And that's where that number came from. There was talk about 100%. When we looked at the history, the numbers that came before the Zoning Board of Appeals fell between 50 and 100%. And this was, we felt very comfortable with this number. And I don't think there'll be the harm. And it's funny that Mr. Hearn has represented some clients that hit his own proposals that approached on many neighbors that aren't happy. But I think this is a good number. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not here as an attorney for people who come in on this. I've sat through a lot of those cases. The last one I had, I think, was 27% increase, just over. You know, it couldn't be shaved down. And I understand, you know, Mr. Sheehan says, I said, it's not a hill to die on for me. But I don't, why don't we try the 50%? See how it works out for folks. But I'm glad to hear that his view of it also is we're not imposing a variance requirement. When I heard that, I got concerned. So thanks, Mike, for that clarification there. And hopefully, that's how you folks understand it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my only question, Mr. Chairman, to Sarah and Mr. Sheehan, if he can answer this. To Mr. Hearn's point on 5.3, changes to single and two-family structures shall be governed by Section 4.4, 5.4. Does that line in 5.3, does that contradict anything that we're doing on 5.33? Or is that, that line doesn't affect anything that we're doing?
I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm sorry.
On 5.3, the, you know, third line from the bottom, changes to single and two-family residents shall be governed by 5.4. Okay, so then you flip over and you go right to 5.4. And Mr. Hearn's point was 5.33. We've eliminated that first line. By leaving this line in, does it contradict anything we're doing on 5.33?
No.
No.
I'm not of that opinion.
Okay. I don't want to have it say, well, it doesn't make sense now. You know what I mean?
Mr. Chairman? Ernie, I view this as an if/then statement. If it's this, then that. So it's like, oh. Right, exactly.
If you answered yes, go right to question nine. That's basically what it is.
Ms. Homewood?
And, Mr. Sheehan, thank you. I understand that most of them you say yes to. And just like every, that's why we have a zoning board because every one of, so many of these properties are nonconforming. And they come in front of you, and you're reasonable, and they get to expand. And occasionally, it doesn't work for the person that's next door. And if we go immediately to 75%, that, depending on the size of the house, can affect a neighbor or two neighbors or three neighbors. So that's my concern with it. Not that you want to say no. We want them to grow into the house. But at least they have to come to the board and have it looked at because every single case is different. Mr. Spence used to say that to me. Careful what you wish for because every single one is different. We have to take them case by case basis. I never know if you hear me if you're just...
We hear you. We got you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board or from the public at this point? Okay. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Ernie Pachakowski, yes. Rob Amber, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
All right, five oh. Who's ready to vote tonight?
I'm willing to vote.
I can vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we give a favorable recommendation to, I don't know what article number this will be, but to this article.
To town meeting? Second.
Got a motion and a second for a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Any last comments? Okay, all those in favor? Debbie Homewood?
I'm a no.
Ernie Pachakowski, yes.
Rob Amber, yes.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, yes.
Thank you. I think that's our whole list for tonight. Lots to think about, though. Lots of good conversations, so. Any last comments? All right, great. Good night. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a second, Joe. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye, Debbie Homewood, yes.
Ernie Pachakowski, yes.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, yes.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
All right, good night. Thank you.
Thank you.